Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the first responders, law enforcement, military, standing post near and far. Heavenly Father, we ask that you dwell in this meeting this evening, Heavenly Father, and bless our community. We ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into our public comment period. The one person who signed up is Mr. Jeff Kilgore. Mr. Kilgore, if you'll please come forward for your public comment. For the record, please state your name and address, and also it would be for five minutes.
Ron is not here. Jeff Kilgore, there's a wreck at the causeway. So I apologize for being a little bit late. I've got some documents I want to run through that I have shared with y'all before relative to the Gateway Project. And it started apparently in May with a negotiation with a firm, GWS, Ben Pierce, formerly an engineer, worked for the county. And on June 3rd, he rendered his proposal in the amount of forty thousand nine hundred dollars. And somewhere along the line in the run-up to the finance committee meeting on July 27th, around July 23rd, apparently Commissioner Wayne Neal, Chairman Neal indicated, and I think Commissioner Quinn, Rafolsky, several concurred that the job should be bid. And so the word went out to Mr. It's going to be bid. And the intent of this project, according to the emails between Director Austin and Director Thompson, was they wanted to make sure that Ben Pierce got the job because he's a nice guy, and he's one of the best traffic people in Glen County. And when the finance committee meeting came up the 27th, and all of a sudden you had to have bids, the word went back out, well, Ben can sharpen his pencil and get this closer to right. And so sure enough, Mr. Pierce did submit a revised proposal. And the revised proposal and the original are identical. The only thing that changed was the number from forty thousand nine hundred, a reduction to twenty thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-nine thousand one hundred. And so Ms. Thompson and Mr. Austin thrashed about trying to figure out, well, how do we get this thing to the finance committee and get it to the board and approved? And there's a number of emails go back and forth where Director Austin says, I'm sure Ben can sharpen his pencil if he needs to. In this package is the finance committee agenda. The item was pulled from that agenda and deferred to the August 5th Board of Commissioners meeting. On August the 4th, Ms. Thompson said that one of the two other firms that you were supposed to get a bid from, Kimberly Horn, had not submitted their bid, yet they did do it late on the afternoon of August the 4th. Of course, your meeting was on the 5th, so you probably didn't have a chance to review that proposal. And this is the recommendation by Director Thompson to award the contract to GWS and Ben Pierce. He subsequently got the work presented to you and by Mr. Fendig's own admissions at the District Two Town Hall last week. There was nothing usable in the work product that came back. And so tonight, you're going to consider a contract to hire Kimberly Horn for another twenty-five thousand dollars. So the taxpayer got hit for twenty-nine thousand one hundred. We've got nothing to show for it. And tonight, you're going to approve spending another twenty-five thousand to do the same job. Another topic I wanted to talk tonight about is the drainage project at Taylor House. That is a failed drainage system at the Varner Development at the Stables. The puddling in front of Taylor House was caused by a failed Roberts Engineering drainage system in that Varner Development. And somehow, it's morphed into a project that now includes Sylvan Road. And God only knows how much the taxpayer is going to get hit on that. It seems like if you're going to do work at the Frederica Sea Island intersection, you probably should defer any drainage work other than asking Roberts to repair the drainage system at the Varner Development. It's systemic in Glen County that we don't do a very good job of looking at the quality control and code enforcement for projects specifically with regard to drainage.
Mr. Kilgore, your five minutes is up.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was wearing out anyway.
At this time, are there any additions or deferrals from the tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move to defer item two to recognize fire rescue employee Jake Jones.
Second. We have a motion to remove item two to defer, and a second, a motion by Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. That motion passes seven zero.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I move to defer item 11 to accept a donation in memory of Chief Carl Alexander in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars and increase the police department's FY-22 revenue and expenditure budget in set amount.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Neal to defer item number 11, a second by Commissioner Booker. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes seven zero. Consent agenda, Commissioners. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda with any item that any Commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move that we approve the items on the General Business and Finance Committee consent agenda, except for any item any Commissioner wishes to pull for discussion.
Second. All right. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, General Business and Finance from Commissioner Neal, a second by Commissioner Booker. Commissioners, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right. Consent agenda passes seven zero. At this time, I skipped over item one for presentations, Chief. I apologize. And we're going to jump back up and do that. So we need to go back to item number one. Chief Batiste would like to, presentation of awards to officers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Board of Commissioners, everyone present, and those who are watching on virtual. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to be able to stand before you. I've been in this position exactly eight months now as the Chief of Police. And as I have alluded to since the very first day, I have had the pleasure to serve in the capacity of representing the Glen County Police Department, which is your department, which is our department, which is this county's department. Every day, our officers go out, not just with our department, but with others, to do extenuating circumstances of life-saving action and carrying on with the good faith of what the job calls for. But tonight, we have a few exceptional cases that I wanted to bring to the attention of the Board, as well as to those present, and as well to the county itself. With that being said, we have some awards that we want to give out this evening. And with your due diligence, I'd like to proceed. The first two officers to be recognized are Officer Trevor Depp, Officer Bernie Quarterman. Step forward, please. While they're walking up, I'm gonna go ahead with the narrative, sir. On the evening of June 12, 2021, while responding to a call which began as a runaway juvenile, but was escalated in nature, both officers responded to the call. And once the young lady was located, it was determined that she was an 11-year-old female who was found in the custody of a 28-year-old male and several other males, who it was later determined that she would have been the product of a human trafficking ring. Both officers immediately stepped to the necessary actions. They took the young lady into custody, not custody, into safe apprehension from these gentlemen, and as a result, saved her from precarious life-changing situation. They went above and beyond in order to make this happen. And in my opinion, you're looking at two heroes here that stand before you tonight. CST Blythe Kelly. For those of you who don't know, any police department, any law enforcement agency bases its investigations on the evidence that is collected. CST Blythe Kelly has been with the department for a number of years, and it has gone through several changes. One of those times was when they had no guidance or direction in the rebuilding of the CST development. She took the initiative to rearrange the entire CST evidence collection group, the evidence room, without any assistance under the CID. And as a result, she was able to revolutionize how they do business now in the department. She's also served as the lead investigator for evidence collection at ninety-plus percent of our crime scenes. And with new inductees coming in as evidence techs, she has also taken on the custody of training them. She is the backbone of what we do every day, and we don't get enough of an opportunity to thank her for coming out at all hours of the day and night, as well as the rest of the evidence team. But we do recognize her tonight for extenuating an above-board response, and want to thank you personally. I'm going to move to be as quickly, quick as I can, sir. Officer Annalise De Bruin, Officer Ethan Barnado, trainee officer Austin Fair. On December 3rd, 2021, step forward, please. Some officers may not be here tonight. They're actually working, or they weren't able to attend due to a training exercise. So accepting on their behalf will be myself and Captain Robinson. On December 3rd, 2021, these officers assisted in the apprehension of Hector Santiago Garcia. Santiago Garcia had been, had an active warrant for armed robbery, as well as being a suspect in a rape case. To their due diligence, a traffic stop when he was sighted occurred. Hector fled on foot. These three units, without Officer De Bruin being present, were able to give chase and were able to apprehend him, take him into custody. When processing him and in the interview room, he admitted to fleeing from the police, not just for the actual robbery, but he also admitted to several other rapes that had occurred, not in just our community, but into other communities in the surrounding area. It's the due diligence of officers like this that go above and beyond every day in this community that needs to be recognized tonight. Two, three more of your heroes before It might also be known that Austin Fair is one of our newest officers. He graduated from the academy a little less than three months ago. Doing the job right. Officer Sergeant Kevin Jones, Officer Ronnie Cooper, Officer Duskin Shipski, Officer Michael Canega, Officer Jamie Cummings, Officer Rory, I'm sorry, Corey Mallard, Officer Brandon Roche, Officer Earl Wilson, Officer Jeff, Sergeant Jeff Williams, excuse me, Officer Michael Dumas, Officer Julie Royer, and Officer Christian Wooton. On the morning and nights of January 7th through the 9th of this year, a subject by the name of Ashley Neesman had fled and eluded several different departments and several officers after a spree of car robberies and stolen car thefts. On the two of the three nights, he had eluded different police departments to escape, both through vehicle driving as well as on foot. On the third night, Officer Cooper, who you see here, happened to notice that a US government forestry truck was parked outside of the gate where it normally should have been, and observed the male pulling the gate shut. He immediately went into action, was able to follow the young man for a few minutes, and determined that the truck had just been stolen from the county yard. This turned out to be the same individual who had been attempted to be apprehended several times. He called in for immediate assistance. Sergeant Jones, who you see before you, he leads that night shift, or the shift at the time, was able to rally all of the officers. They gave pursuit in the early morning hours. And the gentleman was captured after going through several of the different areas of the county, through, driving through a field, and finally losing control of the vehicle and crashing into a tree. Because of the individuals you see here, this individual had been, the subject had been a problem for multiple counties, as well as for Glen County. And we were able to take a major serial car theft person off the road. And that includes thefts from St. Simon Island, as well as other areas of the county. Thank you. Michael Canega. I should be shaking hands. I'm sorry. Dustin Shipski. Officer Corey Mallard, who is not here tonight. He's working. Officer Brandon Roche. Brandon is the young officer we could have lost a couple of months ago due to COVID. He was the one that was medevac to Augusta Medical, so that you identify him. He was married the same day that he was medevac to his bride Riley. I don't know if she's here. Riley, put your hand up. So he's here to tell the story, folks. Officer Sergeant Jeff Williams. Thank you, Jeff. Officer Earl Wilson, who is our photographer and PIO officer, who does an incredible job of bringing all of our feats from the department to you all on social media and in person. Officer Michael Dumas. Officer Julie Royer. And last but not least, Officer Christopher Wu. And let me do this correctly, folks. My apologies. We're almost done, folks. Thank you, sir. Officer John Brandon Barry. Officer Dakota Fields. You the one here? Neither are here. I'll read the testimony to that. On January 12th of this year, Tracy Drew Green, a subject was arrested outside without standing warrants, not just in Glen County, but other counties. Both officers, having seen bolos for him, happened to notice him coming out of a drive-thru of an Arby's on Route 17. They were able to pursue, put him in custody, and were able to take another major offender off the streets as a result of their due diligence. So I want to recognize them also for work above and beyond. And we've already put their plaques away. Officer, thank you. Officer, Officer Philip Garza, Officer Ricky Hall, Officer Otto Amerozsevic. I am learning, sir. Otto, Officer Otto, may not be here tonight. I think Officer Garza is the only person here tonight. On January 13th of this year, Officer Garza was patrolling near the College, Coastal College of Georgia, and was able to assist the college police in locating a stolen vehicle which had been taken from a student on campus earlier that day. Through his due diligence and patrol techniques, he was able to not only help the campus police, but also locate the actual vehicle, which was quickly returned to the College of Coastal Georgia. And with the President's thanks and the thanks of the police department there, another stolen vehicle was able to be recovered. And it's, again, due diligence by this young man and several other officers we have that continues to make us shine as a police department. All right. Officer Ethan, yes, I'm sorry. Officer Ethan Barnado, who's already standing here before you. Officer William Bill Duggan. On Sunday, January 16th, 2022, at about 2:25 hours in the morning, Officer Duggan was conducting, noticed a suspicious vehicle in the area, and conducted a safety and education contact for, stopped the vehicle for educational and safety training violation. The vehicle was found to be occupied by four individuals who turned out to be juveniles. The driver, who was an unlicensed driver, age 16, along with the others, appeared to be all juveniles who gave the impression they were out of Jacksonville, Florida. Officer Barnado was able to not only assist Officer Duggan, but while standing at the ready opposite on the passenger side, he noticed a handgun under the front seat of the vehicle. As it turns out, the handgun had been reported earlier that evening by an individual who had it stolen out of their vehicle. Due to the due diligence of both officers, it was later determined that three of those young men were taken into custody and then transferred to the juvenile detention center in Glen County, where age 16. The second, I'm sorry, the fourth individual, age 18, was transported to regular custody lockup. They also found other paraphernalia, such as rubber black gloves and things, which led to believe we may have taken another car ring off of the road. So again, two more of your heroes who stand before you tonight. So, again, two more of your heroes who stand before you tonight. All right. Now, with that being said, let us go ahead and recognize Officer Michael Canega, who I believe is already standing here. This young man wears a big ass on his chest some days, I think. On Monday, January 17th, 2022, at 1:30 morning in the hour, he was on patrol and was driving in the canal crossing area and locate, which is the shopping complex where the academy's sports is located. He noticed an SUV backed into the loading dock area, found that to be suspicious, and went into a surveillance mode to watch, and observed three females squeezing out from the loading dock door, through the rubberized door, and offloading stolen merchandise into the back of the vehicle. He was able to activate his lights and was able to single-handedly take three young ladies into custody. So again, due diligence like officers that you see before you continue to build us into the Glen County that we will soon be, one that we can be always proud of. Thank you. Officer Nathan Correll. Officer Dustin Shipski, who's already present, Officer Ronnie Cooper, who's already present, and Sergeant Kevin Jones, already present. On January 17th of this year, Sergeant Jones took the initiative to take part of his shift, if not the entire shift, into help Brunswick Police Department. They, in case you don't know, are suffering a major manpower shortage at this time, and often don't have enough officers to cover a lot of the different sectors. Sergeant Jones recognized that and took four of his units in, and they were able to have a very successful night assisting Brunswick PD. Officer Correll was able, on that night, to effect five traffic stops and one arrest on an outstanding warrant. Officer Shipski was able to make two arrests, I'm sorry, make two traffic stops and effect an arrest, which was also as part of a pursuit when the vehicle fled on one of those two traffic stops. Officer Cooper was able to effect three traffic stops. Officer Jones, I'm sorry, Sergeant Jones was able to effect three traffic stops and one arrest based on outstanding traffic charges. So that was a good night again for Glen County, but it was an even better night for Brunswick, because we were able to cross into the county, from the county into the city, which is a new mutual aid agreement we have that makes us effective inside of the city of Brunswick, as well as the county. Again, more of your Centurions standing watch. All right. And we are just about there. Officer Cornelius Mitchell. This is one of, another one of your young men, young officers, who wears a big ass on his cape. He's very modest, he doesn't say a lot, but he does the job every day. Most recently, on February 2nd, yesterday, in the morning while on patrol, he was able to single-handedly help a motorist put out a car fire that was out on 341. And after responding to that later in the morning, an elderly gentleman was attempting to cross the 341 spur. He was held up in the middle of traffic in the second lane. Cars were not slowing down for him, which was posed a major danger for this young man. Officer Mitchell noticed this, was able to activate his lights, hold traffic, and cross the gentleman safely out of ongoing traffic onto the sidewalk. This is not only his only recognizable time of doing this, he's had several other times he's been recognized by citizens who've written in and called in about him helping, including changing tires for stranded females, and basically stepping up and taking the job to a whole different level of the term civility. The last portion of our award ceremony, we shift over to our life-saving situations. These officers who will now be recognized are going to receive life-saving awards, as well as life-saving medals, which will be adorned on their uniforms in the next few weeks. Officer Todd Allen. Officer Todd Allen was on patrol on August 1st, 2021, at approximately 3:27 a.m., when he responded to a call for cardiac arrest. Upon arriving on scene, he found a frantic female trying to give CPR to an individual who had overdosed on fentanyl. Officer Allen was able to then immediately relieve her of her life-saving because of her franticness, continued to perform life-saving techniques, and was able to actually revive the individual and save his life from what would surely have been his final times. Again, quick thinking, well-trained officers like this are always at your beck and call when needed. Sergeant Mike Delatorre, Officer Caitlin Roberts, Officer A.J. Clark. On April 19th, 2021, around 11:50 at night, a female, they were notified of a female who was actively cutting herself with a razor blade, and that she was highly intoxicated and suicidal. As she staggered around in the venue, it was observed that she had actually severed an artery in her arm and was bleeding profusely out of her arm, and would have surely passed away very quickly had it not been for these three officers, who sprang into action, were able to take her into a comfort care position, and then be able to de-escalate the situation by placing a tourniquet quickly on her arm to stop the bleeding, and then to also ensure that no one else at the venue was hurt as well. Without their actions, she would have surely bled out in minutes. This qualifies as one of the highest awards any officer, these three, as well as Officer Allen, could hope for, and that is to have the life-saving recognition of saving another human being's life. Sergeant Delatorre, Officer Roberts, and of course, Officer Clark. Last but not least, Officer Allen. That's it, folks. I know you're here for another hour or two, but that's pretty much it. I wanted to have the opportunity, and I am so proud of these individuals that are standing before you. I have said it from day one, this is a great department. Just watch us shine as we move forward into the new year, okay? But it's not just these individuals standing before you. Every officer that you see before you is not just represented here, but also represented out in the community every day. But before I step back, the latest hero that needs to be recognized. For those of you who don't remember, on July 23rd, there was a murder that took place in Glen County. Two individuals were taken into custody, two brothers, Ethan Bennett, age 17, and Everett Bennett, age 18, who are suspected gang members, allegedly shot a 35-year-old male to death in his yard on Tuesday morning, July 23rd. Through the due diligence of CID and the investigators led by Sergeant Sheila Ramos, they were able to not only work the crime scene, get the evidence necessary, but as of today, the individual Ethan Bennett was found guilty on all charges of murder. So we have taken another person off the streets who has done these vicious crimes. The second person is now coming up on trial, and I expect through Sergeant Ramos's lead to get a conviction there as well. Sergeant Ramos, one up. We don't have, because this just happened this afternoon, because this just happened this afternoon, I don't have the honor of awarding her, other than a handshake. But you will receive something. Ladies and gentlemen, your Centurions that stand the gate every day to protect you, as well as the Glen County Police Department. We're going to take, we're going to take one picture as a group. Folks, I can't tell you how proud I am of these individuals. I say it again, how proud I am. I have Captain Mike Robinson, who is heading up our new administrative division, Brittany Dixon, who is our administrative assistant to the chief, Captain Resden Talbot, who leads our support services division, which is our SWAT team and K-19, as well as other divisions. Ladies and gentlemen, your Glen County Police Department.
And Chief Batiste, could we get someone maybe to take Officer Wilson's place, taking the picture and bring him in?
Thank you very much. Board of Commissioners, for what you guys do each and every day in our community. And we realize public safety doesn't get to do with us, and sometimes, recently, in weeks and months and years in this country, it's been looked down upon. But we as a commission support you guys, and we support you in everything you do, and sincerely appreciate what you do. So thank you, all of our hearts for all you do in Glen County.
All right, item 30 is a public hearing. It is an appeal of the Board of Appeals decision on ZV 4892. The Glen County Board of Commissioners has received an appeal on January 13th, 2022. Decision made by the Board of Appeals of Glen County in case number ZV 4892. The Glen County Board of Commissioners will, at this time, conduct a public hearing to consider the property owner's appeal of the board's appeal of January 13th, 2022 denial of a variance request. Which was to allow an encroachment into the front yard setback for the proposed addition to an existing residence. The .10 acre property, Zone R6, one-family residential, is located at 416 Maple Street, St. Simon's Island. Parcel number 04-11296. Angela Harris and Byron Paul Ford as owners. Ms. Thompson, if you will proceed with an update of, I mean, a summary of what is going forward here.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. Again, this is an appeal of the decision made. At the December 9th, 2021 Board of Appeals hearing, the applicant had requested a variance to allow for the encroachment of a proposed addition into the front yard setback. The applicant stated it was needed in order to extend an existing second-floor deck. The site is R6, where the front setbacks are 20-foot. County staff recommended denial, and then because it was considered self-imposed hardship. The Board of Appeals did vote to deny it, so it's being appealed to you this evening. This information was provided to you in your agenda packet. You see the front setback, the current deck, and the proposed deck extension. Here are photographs. From the side view. The front view. The board first postponed it until January 13th in order to learn more about the variance, and then the research did find that some neighbors of theirs did receive a variance for the same request in 2017. This is information on the 2017 Board of Appeals case. On January 13th of 2022, after discussion and questions regarding that, the Board of Commissioners spoke to the applicants about the necessity for their variance request. The Board of Appeals members, some of them expressed their concerns, and they questioned about the existing areas where more outdoor space could be found without having to encroach. This is more details about the points from that meeting. It was a 2-2 vote, so that has determined to be no action, so the failure to act is automatically considered to be a denial. So because of that, applicants have requested for you to hear the appeal of that decision. Here are your possible motions. Again, because it was a failure to act, that's considered a denial, so you can reverse the denial, or you can affirm the denial. And the applicants are here. If you have any questions, this is a public hearing.
Commissioners, before we go into public hearing portion of it, are there any questions you have for Ms. Thompson? If not, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So does the other person that got the variance?
Yes, sir. There are several encroachments into the front yard setback in this area, and so there was question as to whether those encroachments had been done according to code, had received a variance, what had happened. And so during the deferral, it was determined that the neighbors did receive a variance to their front yard setback in 2017.
So why is the staff saying deny?
Because the criteria that staff has to look at when considering our recommendation for a variance is, is the hardship something that the applicant cannot control, or is it self-imposed? And so because the applicant has enough room on their site to build their house that met the setback, there was no outside forces requiring them to have that front yard setback. That's what staff bases its opinion on. The board, and then yourselves, then can hear from the public hearing, hear from the applicants, and make your own decision.
So the board, has it, was it in favor of these other variances, or did it, did just the Board of Commissioners grant it?
Commissioner Booker, there were only one of those that were actually issued a variance.
I think suffice to say some just built.
Yes, sir.
And without a, without a variance.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm a little bit confused. Is the motion tonight for a 10-foot or six?
It makes a total of a 10-foot deck. So I apologize if there's some confusion. I can go back to the photograph.
So we're not voting on a 10-foot variance. We're voting on a six-foot.
Roughly a six-foot, and that's going to put it just under 10 feet. Myself, Commissioner Earl Quinn.
Commissioners, any other questions before we open up the public hearing? Okay. This is a public hearing. It'll be limited to 30 minutes for each side, with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are limited to relevant information regarding the position, and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual present your group's position in the time allocated. Your cooperation will be very much appreciated. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak in favor of this appeal? If not, sir, go ahead, please state your name and address for the record.
It's Brian Ford, 416 Maple Street. We're here for the variance appeal on 6-foot. We was asking 10, but we're 6-foot, like our neighbors did at 410 Maple Street. And the hardship is for my father. He's 88-years-old. He has arthritis in both legs. And we have stairs that goes up and down, and the stairs are pretty steep. We just don't want to come home one day, and he's falling over, and can't help it.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing.
All right, any other comments?
You do have, you have to do work on the deck, because from what I saw today, if you can go back to the picture, your center beam is busted.
Yeah, if you go to that picture, it's, well, at the very beginning, when we bought the house in 2014, it already had an extended deck on the front. Paul Forside asked us, recommendation was to take that extension off, because it wasn't built structurally. So, we took it off. And if you can see, it's kind of right there where the beam is in the middle. If you look down, it sags down. So, when we took that extension off, that's what it left us with.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioners, questions? All right, sir, thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this appeal?
Hi, I'm Angel Ford. You had said, was there anybody here that approved it? We had a list of our neighbors. We went down everybody that, you know, was in favor of it, or if there was anybody. We wanted to ask them, was there anybody that opposed it? And they all had signed the sheet that we had turned in.
Okay.
Just thought I'd add that.
You can bring that in around and leave it up here for us, or give it to Ms. Thompson. She'll take it right there.
Yes, sir. This is part of the application. We asked them to let their neighbors know, and she is correct. None of the neighbors that she approached had any issue with the request.
Okay. Any others wishing to speak in favor of the appeal? If not, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing out. Are there any of those who wish to speak against this appeal? Anyone to speak against? We'll close the public hearing out. Commissioners, any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I got a motion. I move to reverse the denial of case number ZV 4892 by the Board of Appeals, and allow for a 6-foot.
Encroachment.
They're set a 6-foot encroachment. So, if we just reverse that, we're there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I don't need to add anything. That's a motion.
Second. All right, we got a motion from Commissioner Rafalski to reverse the denial, a second by Commissioner Tostensen. Commissioners, are there any other comments or questions at this time? Any further discussion? If not, we'll take a-
Let me just say one thing here. I had initially was going to oppose this. Oppose it just because, you know, we allow this, then where do you stop? And where 6-feet, 4-feet, 8-feet? I mean, how do you determine what's what? And, but after seeing what else has been done over there, I want to applaud you for going through the process, and not just going out and building the darn thing and asking for forgiveness later. The, and I'd say all that, Mr. Chairman, just to say that we have got to get our ordinance plan taken off the shelf, dust it off, and get this thing put in concrete, so that we don't hear having this conversation about whether somebody needs a 4-foot encroachment or a 3-foot. And I just think we need to move forward with all due steam to get that thing envisioned Glen on the books, so.
And Commissioner Brunson, that revised calendar to conclude that project will be on your February work session agenda.
Good.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, we'll have to take a vote. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you.
Good luck.
Public hearing, item number 31. CUP 4872, 4841 New Jessup Stores Conditional Use Permit. Request for Conditional Use Permit for Mini Warehouse Use in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. The approximate 13-acre property is located at 4841 New Jessup Highway, parcel number 03-04115, in Zone Highway Commercial and Conservation Preservation. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you said, this is a conditional use permit. This property is currently unimproved, and the requested land use is for a storage building, mini warehouse on 3 acres, and future open-air storage on the remainder of the property. The proposed building sizes, a 1,200-square-foot office, 10,574-square-foot climate-controlled storage building, 16,437-square-foot climate-controlled storage building, and then 5 rows of 10-by-20-foot storage unit. A companion site plan was approved by the Mainland Planning Commission. That site plan approval is only valid if you all approve the conditional use permit. This is the zoning map and the location map. This is on New Jessup. It's on the same side of the street as Popeye's Chicken, right across the marshy area from it. This is a survey of the property, and all of this information was included in your agenda packet. Here are photographs of the proposed structures. This is the site plan. These are the buffers that are going to be installed. On January 4th, 2022, the Mainland Planning Commission unanimously recommended that the Board of Commissioners approve CUP 4872 as presented. Here are your possible actions according to the zoning ordinance. This is a public hearing, and Mr. Jake Hightower is here this evening if you have any questions for the agent.
This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing, and will be limited to 30 minutes for each side, with five minutes allocated for each individual speaker. Comments are limited to relevant information regarding the position, and should avoid being repetitious. If anyone in your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. Now, my understanding is that we'll begin to, go ahead and begin the public hearing portion, and you have Mr. Hightower here to speak in favor of it, correct?
He's available for any questions.
Mr. Hightower, do you wish to address the commission? Come on up.
Thank you, Commissioners. Jake Hightower with Robert Civil Engineering. Thank you for your time and night to review this conditional use permit. One note is that we went before the commission back in December, and it was deferred, so we could take more time to review the site plan with the neighboring community. And we deferred by one month in order to do so, and met them out on-site, and also kind of addressed any concerns that they might have. And at this time, I just ask that you approve the conditional use permit as presented. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Hightower? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor for this variance? Conditional use permit, I'm sorry. All right, we'll go ahead and close that out. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this conditional use permit? Anyone against? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments that you may have for staff or anyone else?
Ms. Thompson, what's being done about the drainage issues that are out there surrounding this property now? How's that going to affect the neighborhood?
I might need to defer to Mr. Hightower for that question, but before, as they develop, we review the construction plans, they will have to provide a stormwater solution for that site.
I looked at the pictures that were attached to the report that you put in our package, and it seems to be some pretty serious drainage issues out there now. So, we don't want to exacerbate that.
Absolutely. And I'll be sure our engineering team goes out there to see if there's anything we need to do to improve the situation that's existing.
And Mr. Hightower, do you want to address that?
Yes, sir. What I can say is that we will do a full hydraulic analysis. The fact that this is situated by the marsh, if anything, any drop of water that will hit that site will be accounted for. If there was a house in between the development and the marsh, I could understand the concern. But the way that we're going to design this is one that should, if anything, improve the area. But care will be taken, because we know that there are existing conditions and existing issues with the east shore drive right there. But we believe with our development and also maintaining that ditch, that we should actually improve the surrounding drainage issues.
And Ms. Thompson, can you show us the stormwater retention area of that project again, please?
Would you like me to try to zoom that? Might have to ask IT.
I couldn't, I couldn't see it well enough in my package to, and Mr. Hightower, you might can just take the pointer and show us where the stormwater retention is, and how it would discharge once it's-
So, as it sits right now, it will discharge directly to the marsh. With this kind of a development, it will have a water quality component as well. So, we'll have inlet filters to make sure that the water is clean before it gets out to the marsh. In terms of drainage, we don't see a need for having a retention facility, because it's going straight to the marsh. If we do need one, there's ample space in the open-air storage. And our first draft of the site plan was to include one there, but with its proximity, we don't see a need at this time. But if we do our full hydraulic analysis, and it shows based on the requirements of the local design manual, working with county staff, then we will do so, to make sure that everything is accounted for.
And I was under the impression that every project has to be able to have its own stormwater retention capabilities. So, tell me, tell me why this is a different definition?
Yes, sir. If it discharges directly into the marsh, it doesn't have to. It has to have water quality.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments?
I know that I've had a lot of conversations with Public Works Director Dave Austin in reference to drainage issues out in that particular area. And I know that he's sent his men out to look at it and try to improve it. But if you're saying that you can improve the conditions that are already out there, then that's a positive, that's a plus. Because they do have, they do have issues out there with drainage. And it all seems to drain to this particular property in which y'all are trying to develop. Unless you need to add anything, Mr. Austin?
I guess my question is, the design for, I guess after you get the report done, then can we stop it if you don't do what the report calls for?
Yes, sir. So, they have to do a study of what's out there, and what their development, how it's going to impact it. If they can't find a solution that meets our code, then they will not be allowed to develop as they're proposed.
Okay, well, that's my concern.
Yes, sir.
Since we don't have that now, and I don't, I guess it would have been helpful to have that now, actually. So, it's not normally done that way?
No, sir. This is site plan, which is the first step. The next step is construction plans, where we get all of that detailed, and our individual divisions look at the specifications for everything on the site, and approve that permit for construction.
Okay, all right.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve CUP 4872.
We have a motion by Commissioner Tosten to approve, a second by Commissioner Rafalski. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. That's unanimous. It passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Item 33, under General Business. ZM 4870, Majestic Oaks Phase 2 Plan Development District Amendment. Request to amend the Majestic Oaks Plan Development PD District, ZM 1403 and GC-18-00 to revise the master plan and clarify uses and developmental standards. The approximate 88-acre property. Someone please stop me earlier. I'm sorry, another mistake. Item number 32, I apologize, I was skipping. This is item 32 under Public Hearings. Somebody jump up and throw something at the chairman next time. He gets running off like that. Item 32 is a public hearing. Consider approval of the proposed improvements to St. Simon's Park to allow the removal of the low limb over the pedestrian walkway along Mallory Street on St. Simon's Island. Mr. Austin?
So, I may have a presentation in here. It was in the file. Somebody working on it? There you go, yeah. So, this is a low limb. I'm up here because this is St. Simon's Park, and go back to the first, there you go, there you go. Is that, that's the recommendation to remove the limbs. This is the location. It's on, and the reason I'm up here is because I can't do anything in St. Simon's Park, because you all passed an ordinance that any improvements have to come before you in a public hearing. So, cutting this limb is technically an improvement. You all know what this is. This is on Mallory Road, just to orient you, and the pickleball courts are up here. So, it's about 500 yards south of the pickleball courts on the eastern side. And this is what the limb looks like. It's right here. A majority of the tourists and residents seem to be able to negotiate this, and get around this, and see this, and see that it's a low limb. However, apparently, there are some, and this is the height, it's at 63 inches. There are some that I guess run into this. And so, I'm here before you to tell you, to recommend that maybe to keep a couple of those folks from hitting this limb, we cut this limb off. And we had to cut the limb off right up here, okay? And it's okay with the arborists. And that's the end of my presentation. It's a public hearing, because we have to have a public hearing for it.
Good job, Ms. Austin. This is a public hearing in which we will ask each side, those for and against, to come forward and speak. They'll have 30 minutes per side to speak, five minutes per allocated individual speaker. Are there any of those who are opposed to the cutting of this limb? Would you please come forward? All right, if no one's coming forward, is there anyone in favor of cutting this limb? Nobody? Mr. Austin?
I was kind of hoping that Putty was going to be here tonight to take one side or the other. If we were serving alcohol out there, he'd probably take one side.
All right, gentlemen, the public hearing is closed. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we have Public Works remove the limb.
I have a motion to remove the limb. Do I have a second? I have a motion by Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Booker. Do I have any other comments or discussion? Any more discussion, Commissioners?
I just know Mr. Austin can tell you, we got numerous emails about this. I don't remember how many people were sending them, but-
I think it's important to note that, yes, this commission voted to make St. Simon's Park a passive park, in which any improvements have to be approved by the Board of Commissioners. And that's, the purpose of that is to ensure that it is preserved green space. At least there is significant discussion in the future, if anything is wanted to be added to the park. So, it may look cumbersome, what we've just done, but I think it was ultimately to protect the green space in that area.
And just to let you know, the limb, to be fair to Commissioner Fendig, I think the limb has grown since the last time he was in office, and it has gotten lower. So, it has gotten lower just over the couple of years, and it can't get propped up. So, I mean, it's basically the only decision we have.
Okay. So, Commissioners, we have a motion, we have a second. And any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Item 32 passes 7-0. Thank you, sir. Now, to general business. Item 33. ZM 4870, Majestic Oaks Phase 2 Plan Development District Amendment. Request to- Request to amend, to amend the Majestic Oaks Plan Development PD text, ZM 1403 and GC-18-00 to revise the master plan and clarify uses and development standards. The approximate 88 acre property is located at 3540 Highway 82 and 105 Long Way South, parcel number 03-19937. Brian Hunt, civils, Robert Civil Engineering, agent for Renee Dotsey, Spartan Development Group, Inc. Ms. Pamela Thompson.
Yes, sir. Good evening, commissioners. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. You've seen Majestic Oaks before you, this request. This is an aerial map with the current zoning. It is all zone PD. This is the history of this property. This is the history of this proposed amendment. It has taken some changes. It's gone through the consideration and review process. It originally was amending the PD text and asking for some highway commercial uses on the frontage along 82. The MPC's recommendation to the board when it held its public hearing on December 7th, 2021, was to not allow highway commercial uses, but to allow the specifically listed uses that were in the current PD text that applies to this property and that the residential will follow the county's GR, general residential zoning at 10 units per acre. This is just a visual of the different portions of this property. Up at the top left, the green is commercial uses as are listed in the PD. The blue portion would be the GR zoning, which is multifamily or single family at two units per acre. And the pink color would be single family only, 10 units per acre, 6,000 square foot minimum lot size. This is the PD text as recommended by the MPC. This list, and this again was in your agenda packet, these are the specific commercial uses that were listed in the current PD and are proposed for this revision. The proposed master plan. The planning commission action. And neighbors did come out to the Mainland Planning Commission and to the Board of Commissioners' public hearing to express some concerns. Again, those are in your packet and they are listed on the screen. Buffers, the number of units, and the minimum lot size. These are the Board of Commissioners' possible actions. The Board of Commissioners held their public hearing on this and closed that public hearing and then requested deferral to this evening, Commissioner Tossenson did. They requested that county staff get the agent to the table with, along with some of the neighbors that had concerns, to see if any compromise could be reached. The county staff did coordinate that meeting and we had some attorneys from our attorney's office attend. We did coordinate that. Mr. Brian Hunt also had the HOA and the owner work with the residents. They had told you they had some concerns with the performance of their management company. And so some work has been done in that area. And through the meeting and then the subsequent, subsequent discussions back and forth, this is the possible motion that was settled upon. You all have received emails from some of those neighbors letting you know how they feel about that proposal. I do need to let you know that this condition, which we do have before you tonight, because there are different portions of this property, as you look back on the, let me go back to the master plan. That blue portion, we're going to call the North Tract. We wanted to be very clear when we talked about the condition for that second access to this property. So the proposed motion that's before you this evening, we would like to suggest it say that approve the zoning request as recommended by the Mainland Planning Commission with the following condition: That the subject property shall have a secondary access constructed from Highway 82 to serve the entirety of the property when the Northern Tract is developed. And then period there and delete that last sentence. We just didn't want there to be any confusion because there are two residential tracks, if you will, included on the same parcel. So you've held your public hearing. This is staff report. Mr. Jonathan Roberts is here with Robert Civil Engineering. If you have any more questions for them. And I'm available if you have any questions.
And you say to stop at the period after property, what's the, why are we taking the last sentence out?
Because even though those are different colors on the master plan, they're the same parcel number. And the parcel numbers in the pink can't access 82 through the commercial piece. That's where the navy colored residential will access.
So if you go back to the map, the, the second entrance would be down on the other end where the blue is?
Yes, sir. So let me find, so this is the Northern Tract. Their second entrance will be through here to access 82. And we wanted to make that clear.
They won't access it all through the other?
They can if they want to. These will ultimately probably be all interconnected back here.
Yeah, because that, that's a lot of units in an area to have just one entrance and exit.
Yes, sir. And I think that's not the point, to have these separated. It's just that as they develop this down here, there's not a way for them to have access to 82. This is their access to 82.
Ms. Thompson, am I correct? The International Fire Code is the one that says they need, there needs to be a secondary access in the case of emergency, if possible?
Yes, sir. And it doesn't have to be a fully opened public access. It can be a closed emergency access only.
Drive away type access.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, any other questions, comments? All right, do we have a motion?
And commissioners, if you'd like, I'm happy to, to say what I would appreciate the motion saying. Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Tossenson.
Development, thank you. Planning Development District Text presented by the Board of Commissioners on February the 3rd, 2022 with the following conditions. The subject property, parcel number 03-19937, within the ZM 4870, shall be, shall have a secondary access construction from Highway 82 to serve the entirety of the property when the North Tract is developed.
Second.
All right, commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Tossenson and a second by Commissioner Neal. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? That motion, item number 33, passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Item 34, consider accepting the professional services proposal from Kim Lee Horn dated January 26, 2022 under professional services exemption in the amount not to exceed $25,616.16 with funding provided by the at-large Post One capital allocation. Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Pamela Thompson, Director of Community Development. As you are aware, you just completed a concept study for the St. Simon's Island Gateway Traffic. And eight concepts were considered and initial work done on that. The next step in that project is to have an implementation plan that will review those eight concepts, help you all get that down to the concept that you want to actually address and design and engineer. Under the professional services exemption in our procurement code, staff met with Kim Lee Horn on January 14th. Kim Lee Horn has provided a scope of work and a cost proposal to provide those engineering services. The proposal is for $25,616.16. Those funds would be allocated from the at-large Post One capital allocation. Staff recommends that the board authorize accepting the professional services proposal from Kim Lee Horn dated January 26, 2022, under professional services exemption in an amount not to exceed $25,616.16 with funding provided by the at-large Post Capital One allocation. I'm available if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any comments or questions regarding this? Yes, sir.
For the record, will you explain the privilege through professional services exemption?
Yes, sir. Professional services, the nature of that is they, the county staff does not have to put a specific scope of work out to receive competitive bids.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, any more comments or questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Let's see here. Mr. Chairman, approve accepting the professional services proposal from Kim Lee Horn dated January 26, 2022 under professional services exemption in an amount not to exceed $25,616.16 with funding provided by the at-large Post One capital allocation.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Fendig, a second by Commissioner Neal. Is there any further discussion, commissioners? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Rafalski voting against.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item 35, consider renaming Brunswick Villa's Madge Merritt Park to Ahmad Aubrey Park and naming the Teaching Garden at Ballard Recreation Complex as the Madge Merritt 4H Teaching Garden. Commissioner Booker? We did hear the Majestic Oaks. It was, we made the determination because it was, we had the public hearing at the last meeting. All sides got together and discussed and we voted on it tonight. So there was no public comment tonight.
The parties got together to discuss, but A, I don't agree with what she said. I would not, you know, gentlemen, I oppose, I have complete opposition to the presentation, the information that you were given. I have the impression that you come back here and we'll be open for public discussion again.
No, sir. No, sir, we didn't do that. We have not done that. When we close a public hearing, it's closed for the entirety unless we, unless we find a reason to open it up. And at this point, we did not.
So the request has been approved?
That is correct.
I'd like to tender, for the record...
Ms., well, you're, you're more than welcome to hand it to us, but we have received it via email. We have reviewed it.
I'd like to tender for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Harden. We appreciate your, your comments. Commissioner Booker?
I've been approached by several in the community, neighborhood leadership over in the Arco community. Can you all hear me? Well, he, he said he can hear me, so, but I'll take it off. But anyway, about renaming this park, this was a park where Ahmad, his father lives a few blocks up the road and he would go often just to meditate and clear his thoughts. And several folk in the community asked about renaming this and making a memorial for him. So that's why I put this forth.
All right. Commissioner Booker, thank you. Any other questions or comments, commissioners? Do I have a motion?
I move that we make the name change of the park as presented and also to include renaming the county extension area for Madge Merritt.
Second. I have a motion by Commissioner Booker to rename Brunswick Villa's Madge Merritt Park to Ahmad Aubrey Park and to name the Teaching Garden at Ballard Recreation Complex as the Madge Merritt 4H Teaching Garden. We have a motion by Commissioner Booker, a second by Commissioner Neal. Is there any further discussion, commissioners? All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes 7-0. Before we go into executive session, any other comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into executive session?
I'm sorry. Can I hold that motion? Can you withdraw that motion?
I'll withdraw it.
All right. Commissioner Fendig had signaled to me that he had, had something he wanted to say, so...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the newspaper stories fired up quite a conversation in our community about the implementation of a toll on St. Simon's Causeway. Unfortunately, that work session was not televised in the reporting. That sensitive relationship that we have was very erroneous and filled with inaccuracies. And I appreciate that certain news organizations did try to correct that. What I want to say is that at that meeting, our discussion with my fellow commissioners was to get an informal nod of the head, to reach out to the state roads and toll authority to find out what the latest rule changes were concerning the implementation of tolls on local roads. As you know, I represent District 2. I'm not the at-large commissioner, so my approach is with my constituents' concerns, which a lot of people had questions about. And the goal was to find out the facts about this program and what was available. It was not a necessary voice to implement that toll, but to respond with the facts. The number one fact that I want to reemphasize is that, unless the attorney tells me something different, is that the reason the original toll came off was that the local governments had an obligation to remove the toll once the state had collected the money to pay off the note to the federal government. The final line in that contract says, after that debt is paid off, there will be no toll. And I also asked the attorney to inquire of the federal DOT what the status of that meant. It could mean that any discussion is null and void legally, and I don't think we've heard back from them, Mr. Attorney, have we? So, you know, to set the record straight, but in the discussion, I've done my homework, I've presented it to the community. Aaron has been in all the conversations that I've had with the toll authority and, and other agencies. So I just want to say that I do not plan to advocate or push any toll at this time. It was a fact-finding mission to discover what the latest rules were and to determine legally if there was even a way to have a toll in the future on behalf of my constituents. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Fendig. Now, Mr. Attorney, do we have an executive session this evening?
Yes, sir. For property acquisition, please.
All right, can I get a motion, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we go into executive session for property acquisition.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion for Commissioner Rafalski, a second by Commissioner Booker. All in favor, raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. We're adjourned for the executive session at this time.